Good afternoon, council members, people in the audience and everyone that is watching on YouTube. I call to order the Thursday, March 4th, meeting of Town Council of Bowling Green. If I can have everybody stand up and y'all at home, one participant will pledge allegiance. Welcome again, and we will start today's meeting with public hearing. ZP 2021-002 is a special use permit made by Bowling Green Properties LLC to convert an existing single-family dwelling into two-family dwelling at 221 North Main Street. This property is zone R1 residential zoning application is in accordance with the section of 3-116 of the town code. The planning commission held this public hearing on February 22nd and recommended approval. So I open the public hearing. Yes, Melissa?
Can I, okay, let me make a quick comment if I may. Mr. Mahon, the owner, was unable to attend at the last minute, he wasn't feeling well. He asked that we continue on, he didn't have anything to add. So if everyone feels that's appropriate, without the owner here and the applicant, or we could, I guess, continue this to a different night?
I think it's fine to proceed without the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any, anybody wanting to speak on this? Second call? Third call? Hearing none, I close public hearing. This is to be discussed and in motion on this property. Do we have anybody that wants to make a motion to accept the proposal?
I'll go ahead and make that motion, Mr. Mayor, that we accept this as presented.
All right, got first by Jeff, do I have a second?
I second.
I got a second by Jeanne, any discussion? All right, let's do a roll call, hearing, no discussion. Jeanne?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tammy? Y'all use your mics. Valerie?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you all. Okay, next on the agenda, we've got delegation, we've got Kyle Bates with BDOT, and is he here? Oh, there he is. Oh, Kyle, how are you today, sir?
I'm good, I'm good.
Really? Have you got a little presentation for us?
There she is. All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the board, I appreciate y'all having me here tonight. This is my first Bowling Green meeting. Again, my name's Kyle Bates, I'm the resident engineer for the Fredericksburg residency. So that includes the counties of Stafford, Spotsylvania, and Caroline. I've worked in the Fredericksburg area, we'll call it, in the residency. I worked here for about six or so years as the assistant residency administrator and engineer. I took a brief hiatus down to Chesterfield County where I went down to the hustle and bustle of Chesterfield and worked there for about a year and a half or so, and I came on back home once the resident engineer position here in the Fredericksburg area opened back up. So Caroline County and Bowling Green are near to my heart. My father, actually, I was telling Jo Elsa a little bit ago, my father worked for the co-op for many years and loved every bit of this town. So with that, you know, I just put together a brief presentation, I'm just going to run through a few things, and if you all have some questions at the end, we can, we can talk a little bit, and I can, I can take down some notes, and if there's anything I need to follow up with, I can do so. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. So the first slide here, you know, as you all probably already know, over the last two or three years, we've been doing a lot of sidewalk work in the town of Bowling Green. Between 2018 and 2020, we've been repairing a whole lot of sidewalks that have issues on North and South Main Street. Okay, next one. We have plans to do many more. Over the next four or so years, we plan to focus on Milford, both sides of Milford Street. We're going to look at Chase Street, the eastern side of Main, and we're looking to go back up to what I'll call the North Main in the outer years. So we have plans over the next three or four years to replace a lot of sidewalks in the town of Bowling Green, and it's much needed. You have a lot of roots from trees that are causing some buckling in certain areas, so rest assured, we're going to be coming through and replacing a lot of those sidewalks with our state funds. Next one. Here's a, here's a perfect example, this one may be a little bit minor, but you have these in some areas where you have those tree roots that grow, grow up and potentially cause tripping hazards and things like that. I will say, you know, if there's any, if there are any significant issues that you all see as you're, as you're walking the streets, don't hesitate to put those in or give them straight to me. You can go through the 1804 road system, and that goes directly to our area headquarters and the people that are handling these. Another thing that we're looking at doing, we've been working with the town over the last couple months here, we're looking to do some restriping along Main Street. We're actually going between Davis Court and the Milford and Chase intersection of Main Street. We're going to do some striping for some parking for some of those businesses there, which I think we'll be, they'll be very happy to see. So this is just a small snippet of the plan, but it goes all the way down, like I said, from Davis down to the Milford and Chase intersection. Okay? Including, we're also looking to do another crosswalk here. This is going to be one of the hashed crosswalks, and this is right there by the Bowling Green Suites. So our team is going to look at installing another crosswalk there, which I also know is much needed, so that's going to be one of the hashed crossmarks, it's not going to be one of the straight line crosswalks. We put those at the stop conditions, which would be at like a stoplight or a signalized area, so this one will be hashed. Good, that's good, you're fine. Another just small project that we're going to be working on over the next six to eight months here, once the weather breaks and we have some warm weather, and is, we're going to mill out approximately 150 feet of the eastbound approach to 207. Right now, there's a little bit of a, I'll call it a bump, to put it quite perfectly. It has to do with the settling on, you know, on the other side of the bridge there, right at the approach, so about 150 feet or so, we're going to mill out and make that transition a little bit smoother on 207. The last thing is, you know, I've heard some, some comments here recently relating to Maury Avenue, I think that's been something that's been on the topic in previous years. We are very open to having some discussions about traffic calming, if that's something that the town wants to look at, that, that process, the traffic calming guide for neighborhood streets is out there, and I can send that directly to you all to take a look at, we can help you through that process. It starts with, with getting some traffic data by the locality and potentially ending in any kinds of traffic calming, some things are additional fines, potentially speed humps, doesn't have to be any one of those things, but it could be some of those items. So we can take a look at those as we go through the process, assuming it meets the criteria for traffic calming. And then the last slide I have here is just a project update. So good news being that the town of Bowling Green and Caroline County was selected for a smart scale application. This is the US 301 in Chase Street, it's the name of it, but that being said, it spans over a huge area of Bowling Green with, we're talking about traffic light upgrades, we're talking sidewalks being installed, and then some, some much-needed safety precautions, you know, where we have some accident history and crash history to make some intersections safer. So we're working through that with, you know, the town staff and talking about some of the options, because I think that, heard some feedback over the last, I'll even say the last 48 hours here about some, some of the things, this is a very preliminary sketch. We haven't gone into design yet, there's still a lot open for discussion, we can make some changes. So we will work with the town and figure that out as we go. And that is going to be it. There's my contact information along with my land use engineer and my assistant residency administrator. If you all have any questions, I can take them, or if you want to call me, I can, I can work with you whenever.
I have a smart question.
Yes, ma'am.
Back in 2019, I went with several guys at the BDOT, Richard Spurlock and Jonathan Rumberg.
Yes, ma'am.
I had sent numerous pictures and measurements of sidewalks on Maury Avenue. It's in bad shape, if you turn around Maury, it's on the south side. And to date, as I, when I was talking in 2019, everything was a go, it was going forward, it was supposed to have been in that spring. Supposed to be in springtime when it was supposed to be done, and we got to see anything, and then I just thought, yeah, it's not on there.
Can we go back to the sidewalk slide? There we go. So we've got Milford Street on there, we don't have anything necessarily with Maury, we have Chase on there, but that's not to say that that can't happen, especially if we're talking about an isolated area. It's not to say that we're not going to come onto Maury and fix any issues, that's, that's not necessarily what that means, but, you know, we have a certain allocation of funding to, and over the next three to four years, that's what we're looking at, but while we're there in year one, if there are issues off of Maury, we're not going to mobilize to that area and not fix those. While we're in that area, we're going to hit everything that we possibly can with the funding that we've got. So I'll take a look at those myself and see where they're going to fall on that schedule, and I can let you know.
I'll be glad to forward all these pictures to you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I'm Deborah Howard, and I'm shooting on Maury Avenue, and I just tell you that in the last three years, I mean, my sidewalk, I can't even walk there because when it rains, I have to walk around, even when it's not raining, and it's very annoying to me. I noticed there are other areas in Bowling Green on Main Street, when they did their sidewalks, they did way more than there were ever any problems with some people, it looks like they have a grandy sidewalk on the whole lot that they live on, and I don't understand that versus me who's lived on Maury Avenue for 20 years, and my sidewalk, and there's a lot of it, I'll be honest, since Calvic did their work, but I don't understand why I can't walk on my sidewalk, it's so bad.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's a real issue for me, and it's really weighing thin. So to say that for three or four years later, I might see something, that's not good enough for me.
Well, that's not necessarily what I'm, what I'm getting at.
Well, I, I need something concrete, I'm really tired of it being put on the, and you're somebody different, I know last year we saw someone different, came up and did the same thing. So talking about traffic on Maury Avenue, we have looked at traffic calming patterns and options, it always goes back to the data, that they don't have the data. So I want to work with someone on a plan, I, I said that I want to work with someone on a plan, and tell me what, what, you know, they always, we don't have enough data to say there's a speeding issue. I live on Maury, I see it, my neighbors see it, and I, I know we talked about getting this, our police officers here tonight, because I really want, we need to put this on the agenda, I want that piece of equipment where we can get the data and we can move forward with this, because I'm getting very frustrated with it, and so are my neighbors. And the same thing for Main Street here, I see, you talk about options, I would like to go back to the slide where you were doing this, the crosswalk. What is different about that one, you were saying, I miss that on Main Street, you're getting ready to do, it's not the stripes, or it isn't the tracks, or you want to go to the Suites?
Yes, ma'am, it's going to be essentially the same crosswalk that we have right, right up the road there, where it's, it's, if you go back one slide.
Two lines in the road?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
The two lines in the road are for the stop condition, so that's going to be at like your stoplights, or if you have like a, some, something that where the vehicles have to stop for, and the pedestrians go, this is one of those where, where you have to, the vehicles have to yield to the pedestrians, and so that's where you get the, and that's a pretty standard thing statewide, that's where you get the hash marks there, so that's what that's going to be.
The yellow lines that will be seen, is it?
It's, it's white, I believe they're white lines, but, yes, ma'am. So, and to, to go back to the traffic calming, I'll look into that, you know, I realize that you've had a, a lot of different people here.
Yeah.
I'm not going anywhere, I'll tell you that.
Thank you.
I, I live in the area, I, this is where I wanted to work, I went down to Chesterfield and did some good stuff, but came home and I don't have any plans to go anywhere, so you've got my contact information, I will look at it.
I am concerned about the traffic on Main Street, we brought this up at the last meeting. I'm not sure that, I feel like we need to be very aggressive with getting people to even stop for pedestrians, that's a problem. I have a business on Main Street as well, and I don't see people stopping for pedestrians. It's, and I'm hoping that when we do the new paving with the parking, it will help, but.
Yeah, I would say that's a fair, that's probably a fair assessment.
You have enough sign, and I don't know what, I'm assuming the VP, when you have your, the unassigned mark crosswalk standards, what, what the guidelines there are, I see the VPD, is that nine per day of vehicles?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does anyone know what ours is on Main Street?
I can pull that data for you, I don't have it off the top of my head.
It's hard for me to know where a category falls, but I was looking at that, and that would be something I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely, I can, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bates, will that crosswalk have a sign here with the lights that you can push across, or no?
No, ma'am, but it will have some signs, they're going to be the fluorescent signs, the same ones that you have at the other crosswalk that's hashed across Main Street. There are not, it's not a signalized crosswalk, we do those only at the, you know, signalized intersections, but, but there will be fluorescent, fluorescent signs.
And if you'd like to walk that street with Maury, I'll leave my name and number.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll meet you there, thank you.
Absolutely.
Kyle, I have a question for you. In reference to the last slide that you got on there.
Yes, sir.
The smart scale project, can we touch base on that a little bit, please?
Sure.
With the recent discussion with some of the personnel from Caroline County about access for emergency vehicles, and I think you briefly touched on that, from the big work I have, you know, concern was voiced when it was brought to the planning commission, I was on that. Somehow, you know, it was placed in the application that that intersection was going to be eliminated, so that, that is not feasible for us with fire apparatus, law enforcement, and rescue squad, and on the timeline I have, it says that validation scoring this project would be between August and December, and that would be for 2020. So how would we go about changing that since the application's already submitted, that that crossover, it's, it's not going to be feasible to close that or eliminate it, and I know that there's been discussion about other means to make it for emergency vehicle only, but if that's going to shorten that width of that intersection, that's probably also going to pose a problem for the length of our apparatus coming down courthouse and making a left to respond.
So absolutely, what we can do is, is take a look at that intersection in particular, you're talking about the courthouse one or the, the Chase Street?
Courthouse. You know, I guess there's some data that was placed on these maps saying that courthouse was a problem for accidents. I, in about 12 years of fire and rescue, I have not seen an accident there, I've seen them at Chase Street and 301, and I'm aware of that, that's the one that is depicted to have a green tee, continuous green tee rework there.
Yes, sir.
So I was just curious about how do we go about since this application's been submitted, and if we need to modify that, because I think, you know, the other portion of this is very important to the town, we don't want to jeopardize that, but we just want to make sure that our apparatus and, you know, personal safety departments can still.
Absolutely, understood. That's something my, my, I mean, we are very preliminary, we haven't started design by any means on this, these are some conversations that as we go through the process, we can have, you know, there may be an opportunity, like you said, for something like emergency vehicles, but we would make sure that if we were going to do that, you would have that turning radius, and we have traffic engineers that can take a look at that, and we can understand, you know, we, we know what that, that's going to be, we can even get the dimensions of your, we do that for, you know, posted bridges sometimes, we get the, you know, the axle spacing and things like that, so we can take a look at that, we are open to those discussions, you know, we are, again, very preliminary in this process, there'll be a public hearing, you know, this is a long way, a long road, we'll say.
That's fine, I appreciate, I just wanted to ask one more here, thank you.
While we're on that smart scale.
Yes, sir.
I do have a concern that was passed on to me by Michelle, that if we do make it just for emergency vehicles only, that his big concern is, is that it's going to become a hazard, because now his, people are still going to want to turn on it, and there's no turn on, you know, won't be stopping in the roadway, slow down the roadway to try to come across, even though it's labeled as emergency vehicles only, just like mediums on the interstate, people still use it. So he's, he's concerned about that, and I can see where he, you know, why he would be. And I know if we say, take that out altogether and just keep it like it is, I know that has something to do with our smart scale program as far as the money that we're going to get.
If we re-scope it, and here's, you know, without getting into too many of the weeds here, if we change the scope of the project, it would have to go back and be re-scored, we would have to go through that process again, and I don't think that's something we want to do, because that's $12 million from the, the state that the, the town and Caroline County are getting, I don't think that that's something we want to pass up, but I understand you all have needs that you need to meet. So what we'll do is, my, my, you know, designs, our, our design staff will work with the town, you know, Jo Elsa and I were just talking about it, so we'll, we'll work with you all as we go through the process and, and see what we can and can't do as far as what that crossover is, and if it gets to a point where, you know, we're at a standstill, we will have those conversations, and we'll have those conversations with Caroline County as well, so we're here, we're open to the discussion. I, I can't tell you it will work or it won't work, because I don't have the data in front of me, but, you know, we're absolutely going to look at it, because I, we don't want to get you on a situation where your, your fire apparatus can't get to where they need to go, so we'll.
Well, if y'all could do me a favor with your, you've been a correspondent, since if you could start CCing me on your correspondence on the smart scale, I appreciate it, I'll stay up to date, if you can call and talk to me about it, so I can kind of stay up on it, I appreciate that.
Absolutely, and I think you and I can talk more often just in and of itself.
Yeah, hold on, you know, I'm available most of the time.
Yes, sir.
I do have a couple others. The stoplights at Milford, Main, and Chase Street there, is there anything in the future on redesigning those poles and getting rid of the wires overhead and using arms to come out, the lights to kind of update it, make it look more modern, lose that 1950's look?
Potentially, I'm actually, the graphic that I'm looking at on the smart scale, I have to see if that's included in that project, because that, that does, I know they're doing that for the, the Chase Street, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I believe it is Chase Street, I think that is a signal that's going to be redone as part of that project.
Okay, and the other thing is, my big concern here, since we, since the town really picked up on traffic as far as people coming in, parking, eating, and all this, there's a handicap spot that's right there in front of Los Angeles Migos. How it got there, I don't know, but the thing about it is, there's no handicap ramp there for anybody who needs to have, you know, access from a wheelchair and then have the back of the van. There is no access ramp there at all, except for you go down to the end of the road.
Yeah.
Down to courthouse. So is there any way we can squeeze in a ramp, even if we have to move the handicap spot or something a little bit, and get a ramp or something there, to make it more accessible to people who come out the back of the vans in their wheelchairs?
I'll have to check.
Appreciate you looking at that.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it, I'm not sure, you know, with the ADA standards, I'll have to see, you know, because if I did it for, for one business, you understand, like, you know, could, every single one gets a handicap ramp.
Yeah, I was going to say, you have to move it, I mean, I would be, that's why I said, I don't have it down there, you know, but there is no wheelchair ramps.
I will look into it, and I will let you know.
All right, that's all I have, I appreciate it, anybody else got anything?
If I could, sorry, thank you.
We had one concern from the public about stormwater drains on Main Street between Milford and Maury, and wanting to know why there are not any stormwater drains on that section of South Main Street.
Okay. You were talking about stormwater drains, is that what you said?
Yes.
No, that's something we lack in this town, we have one drain for a whole long bus, I mean, you go down the street, you got one, and one, and...
I was going to say, there are stormwater drains, you know, I'll have to, honestly, if you've got some contact information, I'd be interested to know. I was gonna say, there are stormwater drains, um, you know, I'll have to, honestly, if you've got some contact information, I'd be interested to know where. Because the, the, when the, 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 uh, road was designed, it was designed to take the amount of water that it's getting. And if it's not, what's changed? Uh, that's the holistic question that I guess we, we can ask. And so if there's something that's changed, that's making the water not flow to where it's supposed to get to, um, then that's something I can fix. So I'll have to, if, if you've got some contact information, I can reach out to the citizen directly and find out. Because the, I mean, the, those, the storm drains that are out there, it is curb and gutter, they are designed to take the water. So, uh, I'm, I'm curious, you know, whether it could be leaves or something's blocking up the flow, it could be several different things. But I can look into that specific one, if you've got that information, so.
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, it's great to.
I'm really satisfied, no other questions. Well Kyle, I sure appreciate you coming, and I know about those two, and you hope to see more of it, and can't wait to, uh, get to work with you. I'm trying to get something that should take care of that Maury Street, I know there's a bunch of big issues, that's, that's not going away, so you're gonna hear a lot of all that.
Yes sir, well, I'm here for it.
We're perfectly determined people, if you wanna see something done with it, so, uh, bear with us and, uh, try to help us out.
Will do, will do, here to help.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
All right, moving on, we've got, uh, public comments. Uh, keep your, uh, you can open up public comments, this is, uh, public's, uh, time to voice their opinions, concerns, gratitudes, uh, complaints. And, uh, when you come up, please, uh, state your name and address, and I'm trying to keep your comments to, uh, two minutes. And, uh, now open, public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Bonnie Cannon, South Main Street. First of all, I'd like to echo Deborah. Mr. Bates, about the traffic, I know there's a problem on Maury, but especially on Main Street, I live right on Main Street. And I am just amazed, the traffic that flies up through Main Street, I mean, it even goes on at 3:30 in the morning. The noise, the noise is horrible, am I right? The noise is horrible. Speeding, trucks, I just wish that could be another way to handle this traffic. I mean, we have a road over there and we have a road over here. All these big tandem trucks don't have to barrel up through the town. And all these young trucks, I, what do you call them? I'm not a young person, guys, hopped up in the air, got these big mufflers on them. They don't realize a resident's trying to sleep at 3:30 in the morning when they're flying through the town. Anyway, I do echo you on that, Deborah. Also, I have one other item I'd like to talk about tonight. I read the minutes on the website, and I saw something on there about the trash, that y'all will be negotiating a contract, am I right?
Yes.
I would like to see, I mean, from my perspective, since you're raising other rates and raising other things, do away with the trash. I don't want it, don't need it, don't care about, I'm a mile and a half from the landfill, and also on there, I read there's only 375 residents getting trash, am I right?
Houses, houses.
There are more residents in this town than 375, so I shouldn't have to be paying for it either. But if, um, you could, I would rather, I prefer to see the trash go away if my rate's gotta be raised on other things. For example, this water thing I know that's coming up, that thirty some dollars that I'm paying for the trash, I'm gonna be paying for the water. So do away with it. If you don't do away with it, it should be at least twice a week pickup. Because I had, and furthermore, my husband, I'm not even hardly able to get our buggies out to the street, cause I have a lot of trash. Uh, please consider it, I mean, I don't think that's a bad thought. I mean, like I said, 375, I know there's more people that's in the town than 375, so if I gotta do it, everybody should do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Anybody else? Yes sir, come on up.
Town manager, elected representatives, citizens of Bowling Green, my name's Ken Story, I live in Hanover. I'm a Realtor, working with William Billy Beasley, and he asked that I briefly discuss the project Bowling Green Estates. As there appears to be a lot of misinformation floating around about the project, here are the facts. The project on 11.5 acres off 301 across from Old Mansion was previously zoned and approved for 24 single-family homes. Billy Beasley has talked to numerous developers about the land and the project, and those developers may have other thoughts and ideas. But Mr. Beasley has never wavered from the initial approved site plan for 24 homes on the property. It is not true that the project would wrap traffic on Lafayette, the only entry and exit would be on 301. The project does have an easement from Lafayette, but it never has been intended or proposed for roadway. It is not true that the project would overload the town's water and sewer capacity. The project includes the developers installing the lines to connect to the town's line on Main Street, and a pump station within the development to move the waste down the line. I believe there is a presentation scheduled for the council later this month that will support the contention that the town has more than enough water and sewer capacity to handle the 24 homes proposed for this development. This project would have to go back through the zoning process again to be approved before it could even be started. I believe revisions to the town's comprehensive plan will allow a slight increase in the number of homes on the property. But Mr. Beasley has not pursued this effort, as he has already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on site plans and engineer fees for the current 24 home layout that was previously approved. The project has been on the books for over a decade, and had it not been for the Great Recession of 2008 to 2012, it would have already been built. To those spreading falsehoods about traffic on Lafayette and water sewer capacity in the town, I'm sure they have their reasons, but let's stick to the facts. The facts are that this project has been approved once, would be an asset to Bowling Green, have sidewalks and paved drives, and would provide needed housing inside the town limits. To steal a line from Jimmy Stewart talking to local businessmen in an iconic movie, don't homeowners make better citizens? Better consumers, better customers for your businesses? Of course they do, everyone knows that, but Mr. Potter. One of my favorite lines is, where will the children live? If we stop all the new home building, where will your children live? Do you really want to force your grandchildren to live far away because there's no more housing in town? Thank you, and I hope this clears the air a bit and puts to rest some misstatements about traffic, water and sewer issues, and the housing density involving Bowling Green Estates. Have a great evening, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else care to, uh, speak to council on any matters? Second call, third file, hearing nobody else, close, uh, public comment. And we'll move on to staff reports and presentation. The chief can't be here tonight, he's, Chief Cecil, if you don't know, he is at a chief's, uh, training all this week. Uh, which is one of the things that we ask for him to do, uh, once we appoint him as chief, so he is fulfilling that. Uh, so he'll be back tomorrow sometime, and we can find out more about all that next month, or we could get Jeff's doctor. All right, Melissa.
Uh, Chief Cecil asked that I follow up on the speed trailer, and that actually, um, relates to what we were talking about as the traffic study earlier in the evening that, um, Councilwoman Howard had mentioned. We had asked at the last meeting to, I, I, I'm sorry, in an email, we asked for consensus from council to allow us to purchase the speed trailer, we have money in the budget, but I'd like all of council, or a majority of council to be on board before we make that purchase. It would count cars, record speeds, and flash the, the, um, speed that the cars are going. There's also an option to have a message that either says like, slow down, or drive like your children live here, or something that we can change. Um, it would not issue tickets, it would not take pictures, but it would collect data that we can use for our traffic study.
Yeah, one of the other things he could use that for also is, he'll know what time of day that we get the most speed who's coming through. And then he can have officers sitting there at those times, whereas right now, he doesn't know, it's, you know, it's up in the air. So we need to be using multiple locations that we have reported problems, so we can help out, so everyone might wanna think that, I don't think it's that expensive.
Melissa, would, yeah, you said it was $800, Melissa?
No, it was, it was about $7,000.
Yeah, it's about, yeah.
$7,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sorry, um, well, do we, what do we, um, when do we need to move this through, cause I feel like we've been, I mean.
I'd like to know that we have a consensus of council to move forward, that I wouldn't wanna spend $8,000 or $7,000 and then most of council say, why in the world did we spend that money? So, I mean, the money is in the budget, we have it available, I just need to know that council's on board with the, the purchase.
Melissa, does that trailer have a camera?
It does not have a camera. Well, it doesn't have a camera that takes pictures of speeding vehicles, I guess it has some sort of camera that allows it to track the number of cars, I'm not sure how that portion works.
It'd be nice if it had a camera, but I guess it'd all be recorded.
Melissa, did you say counts the vehicles too?
It does, it counts the number of vehicles, it records the speeds, it's all.
So it can give us a tally of any cars coming through the area?
Yes.
V-Dot as well?
Yes.
Good to hear, thank you.
And also, we, we have the right to stick it where we feel, you know, do the best where when V-Dot has somebody coming to do it, they stick it where they want it, and, you know, so maybe in plain view or not the right spot, so it, it gives us the option that we can put it wherever we know we can try to get the best out of it. So, uh, do I wanna give, raise your hands on who has a consensus on wanting to have them pursue this? How y'all wanna do this?
I have a quick question. Is this something that, uh, that chief has, uh, discussed with, um, the county, if they have one that he could have borrowed at some point?
They do have one that we have borrowed, um, I, my understanding is, we, it's not easy for us to get the data off of it when it's someone else's, it's my understanding.
Okay, that's fair.
And they also, sorry, they also have.
On the last meeting, sorry.
They also have it already planned out ahead of time, where they're gonna position it through for so, you know, for however many days out. So it's hard for us to call and say, hey, can we get this, when it's already dedicated out, so, you know, we've already talked to them about it, and, uh, we can get it once in a while, but not when we need it, whatever.
Oh, that's good, that's a great question.
Yeah, it is.
It's, this isn't, we don't have anything approximating this, any kind of tools, any handheld tools or anything that he could do this with currently? Like, this would be a totally new piece of equipment, entirely, right?
Totally new piece of equipment, I mean, of course, he has a radar gun, but that requires a person using it. So this would be able to track traffic 24 hours a day without any extra staff.
Well, math on this thing would be about $6 would be asking for every reason, so.
All right, uh, how do y'all wanna proceed with this? You want to give, uh, consensus? If I wanna raise your hands, and see what we come up with?
Yes.
All right. Let's see some handbrakes. One, two, three.
Do I have, that was in favor, I had three in, in favor?
Yeah, I'm sure I'll do one, just Jean?
No.
Jeff?
I'm kind of conflicted, is it just kind of expensive? Yeah, that amount is, it's more than, than I personally pay in taxes, and I always have a problem with that, asking that from anybody, $7,000.
Well, the money is in the budget already, right? It's already been allocated for this year's budget.
The money was not allocated for the purpose of buying this trailer, but we have available funds.
Available funds, okay, we have available funds?
If we have available funds, then yes, I can go.
Jeremy?
Uh, yes, I think it's very beneficial for the citizens.
Valerie?
Um, difficult decision, because it is safety, just because we have the funds and the budget doesn't mean we have to use them. $7,000 plus, um, cause I think it's a delivery tree, um, it's a little too much for me to say yes to at this time. Given the situation, the economic, uh, things coming down the pipeline, we've been putting out a lot of money for other things.
The other?
I say yes.
Erin?
I'll say yes, if they can supervise a deterrent to slow the folks down in the town, be more speed.
All right, Arthur?
I just got a quick question, um, I'm under the understanding that we used to have one, can you give me a reason on why it was, um, retired or sold?
It was, um, I can't say what happened to it, I don't think we could surplus it in the usual way, but that was a decision between the last police chief and the last town manager that, they had made. I don't know the reason for it, though.
Yeah, cause I hear it would cost too much to fix it for what you can buy one, it was, it was other big.
Yeah, um, and I might even remember wrong, this is like, wasn't this like three police chiefs ago? Um, and yeah, like, the tech wasn't compatible with the current stuff.
I'll, uh, say yes, with, um, to deal with, uh, public safety and the concerns of the citizens in the town.
All right, so that's five yeses and two noes, uh. I'm glad, do I need to make just a motion or, or just a consensus is good enough? I can't hear you.
I know, sorry, I think a consensus is fine.
Okay, uh, well, you have, you have five yeses on the consensus and two noes, okay. Uh, next is, uh, public works. If they got any, uh, comments or concerns on public works. Here, um, uh, economic development coordinator, who else you want to report?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can you circle back to the public works?
Yes.
I've got a question, well, I guess we can, um, it could relate to, I don't remember if ten you want to bring it up now? Cause it has to do with the comprehensive plan, um, is there any discussion on that, or? Is that, that's just, I mean, it's just scheduled on the public hearing date?
Yeah, that's just, yeah, that's just for, just public hearings, I mean, if you wanna.
Yeah, I, I do, um, with, sitting through the previous planning commission meeting, um, and it, I mean, it deals with the comprehensive plan, there was a graph that was on there, and specifically it stated that we are not taking into consideration the capacity that the county has, and with the building that's going on with, uh, Maury Heights now, um, if nobody's familiar. Maybe you can drop down there and, um, see that they're bringing it home, so I know it's in the county. But if some of that sewer and/or water is gonna be required from us, um, I think we, as a council, need to take that into consideration.
Mayor, that might be better for me to answer than for, uh, the director. So we are taking into consideration any customers that are our customers, even if they're inside of town or outside of town. What that original chart did was completely remove the 45,000 gallons of reserve that the county has for their bulk sewage.
Melissa, can I, I, on that, um, are, you're talking about that utility cap plan part?
Correct, uh.
Okay, all right, um, yeah, it, it's not that we weren't taking into consideration, um, we have a full 250. Um, for the sake of the percentages, um, we were taking that 45 as a total, as more of a given, like, we were considering all of it, not some of it. So it was like, it was actually more assuming that it's all getting used rather than, uh, trying to approximate that. And then using the other 205 as a basis for the, um, subsequent, um, percentages after that. So it's not that it was being ignored, it was being taken out of that graph for percentages, to make those percentages easier. And then also assuming that, that, um, 45 would be completely used. So we would actually, via the way that was done, we'd actually be doing better because we aren't really using all that 45. Now that said, uh, the next version of that graph is going to have the kind of stuff in it.
Interesting, thank you.
No, please, you're awesome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding my staff report. Perhaps the, uh, the most eye-catching portion is, uh, this YouTube subscriber giveaway program that, uh, that we are implementing. that we are implementing. So this is being done as a way of promoting a culture of transparency here in town with our elected officials, our boards of commissions, and any recorded meetings, so that the public is encouraged to subscribe to the Town of Bowling Greens YouTube channel and be a part of these meetings and make sure that they're getting their information from the meetings and directly from the source. So the way that it'll work, it's really something cool and exciting and fun for folks to participate in. And again, it promotes a culture of transparency, which I think is something that we should be doing and should be rather proud of as making a priority for our town. So folks would simply need to, so next week, a video will come out on YouTube on the Bowling Green channel. I am going to be creating that video. I'm not, I'm not real happy about having to do a video, but I'm going to do it. I just get a little bit shy when it comes to video stuff, but I'm going to do it, and there will be a video coming out letting folks know to subscribe to the YouTube channel between March 8th and March 29th. They'll have to like the subscriber giveaway video, and then they'll have to comment in the comments with their full name. We'll do a random drawing, and the winner will receive 10, $10 vouchers to be spent at any participating small business, so a value of $100. And again, they'll be able to spend that money at any participating small business. So again, this is just a positive way of asking folks to get informed and to be a part of our processes here with regard to local government.
Anybody have any questions for Melissa? Joel, also?
Okay. That sounds pretty cool, Joel, also. Give me a call, I can give you a hand with it.
Thank you.
No, I like it. You know, I think the more participation, the better, the more eyes we get on the meetings, the better. The more that we as a council can, you know, bring attention to bringing people in to watch it, all the better. Should we maybe get a quick consensus that, you know, we're going to stay out of possibly winning this? I want to say like, you know, because like I might want to make a comment, but I'm not, I don't want to be considered to win, because that would be inappropriate. Beyond that, I think it's a great idea, and that's all I got.
Can I touch base on something else on your report, Joel, also?
Yes.
Sorry to circle back to it again, but with this smart scale project, I just want us as a town, I guess, to be transparent to the business owners that are on the thorough corridor. And looking here, it's been highlighted on here, that area between West Brothers Avenue and Lakewood Road, that multiple crossovers do not meet the V dot road design spacing standards, and that they could essentially be recommended to be closed. So that could, number one, pose a problem for those businesses that are out there on that corridor. And then second, two of those businesses operate, you know, tunneling maneuvers, so if they close the crossover and they've got to go down and make a U-turn while in tow, I just also see that as a, as a safety hazard, you know, on the roadway. So I think us coming from the town, talking to the business owners and letting them know that the potential for their crossover should be closed is important, since that's also in that plan.
Thank you for your feedback, Councilmember Holley, and I have made note of that, and will circle back with you, but I think that's a great suggestion and certainly something that business owners absolutely need to be aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say real quick, though? When we inform business owners, can we make sure we tell them this is not a dumb deal? That we're in the preliminary phases and it has not happened yet and is not going to happen within the next couple of months? Just so we're informed toward it.
Thank you, Councilmember Coyle, absolutely doing that.
Anybody else? Thank you, Joel, also.
I do have one question.
Okay, sorry.
All right, I just missed. So your, um, your Bowling Green Business Spotlight, is that something new that you're doing or what?
Um, no, it's not something necessarily new that we're doing. We did do some Facebook Business Spotlights in the past, and an email went out to all of the businesses. This was a while ago, Deborah, so I would have to look into my records, but if the painted horse would like one, we'd love to do that for you all. Ultimately, Celestino Restaurant is a new restaurant here in town, and I saw an opportunity to meet with the owners, understand a little bit more about their business model as well as the culture of their food. It's something that's obviously new to Bowling Green, but there's only two Filipino restaurants in all of, in this whole region. The other one is in Spotsylvania. So I saw it as an opportunity to learn a little bit more about the culture of their cuisine and to introduce them to Bowling Green, to residents and folks in the region. I didn't think that a press release was necessarily the right forum or medium of communication, so the Business Spotlight seemed to have a ring to it. And so this was more of an informational piece for folks to learn a little bit more about the services and the food that's offered there.
Yeah, I think it's great, and I'm not asking for the painted horse, because I just got seen this in the packet before, and I think it's a good thing. It's good to see that you're, you know, you're willing to do that, and it's a great thing.
Definitely, and we, for the record, we, not just the painted horse, but we are happy, I'm happy to do a Business Spotlight for any business in town, just again, for the record. That's what I'm here to do, is to help promote our small business community. So please let me know if this is something that anyone is interested in.
I just have a quick question, Quillian, Joel, so the stickers that you've got for the HVAC system and the media?
They are in, and I have started distributing them as of yesterday. We saved about $200 cutting these ourselves, so we just ordered one big sheet and then used an X-acto knife and cut them. But they're window clingers, transparent window clingers, so they are stickers, which is nice. So they won't, so they'll adhere to your storefront, but they won't, they won't be difficult to remove. But this is what they look like, and I still have some folks that need to, that I need to get these to, but they are here. We got them this week and just cut them yesterday and started to distribute them. So it's a really kind of exciting thing for Bowling Green and for our small business community.
Thank you.
And if you, if you're walking out this evening, I actually just put one on the front of the town hall door, so you can take a look at that, because we do have the filtration system here as well.
Okay. Am I safe to say thank you, Joel, also now?
Good job, Joel.
All right. Thank you, Joel, also.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for having me tonight.
Yes, ma'am. And, uh, town managers, report.
My report is a little longer than usual. I thought it would be good to include some action items instead of making them individual agenda items to kind of keep them all together. But first, I want to highlight that a first draft of the proposed budget is in your packet, and that's for you to look over, get questions, come back to me, and then at next town council meeting, we have a budget work session prior, and we can talk about those, we can address those, and I can be prepared. And I emphasize, this is a first draft, so I realized a couple of things were actually missing after going through it. I inadvertently left out 301 tax, which is about $35,000, so that's going to go in there. And then there were just a couple other numbers I put in but do need to be adjusted. Trash, I made a guess on the trash. We haven't gotten the bids in yet. And there's a couple other numbers that are kind of placeholders right now. I just wanted to make sure I had the majority of it balanced, so I'm happy to take questions on that. No? Okay. I had a couple of action items. One was, I need some direction on the letter of support to Caroline County for the surface water permit. At last council meeting, I was directed to draft the letter, and Andrea, I sent it to Andrea, and she gave some advice, and I'm waiting for council's direction on whether it's ready to be sent to the county.
I've got one thing to add on there. If we could put, you know, like a rough estimate of quantity for that project, so say if we knew we were going to use 300,000 gallons, if we just doubled that, looking for future growth, just to put it on that letter. So I, and I don't know, maybe that would have to go to the Public Works Department, but whatever it is anticipated, we just double that in case there's any cuts down the road on this project. We are covered for this capacity that we would need here in the town.
Yeah, can I build off the hell a little bit?
Go ahead.
Okay. By not having any kind of a capacity estimate on there, we're kind of locking ourselves out to an extent. A county is looking to go forward with this endeavor, bottom line goes over without us, and we're kind of getting on to that deadline of that. I certainly think that we should at least do what we have in front of us, where we say that we're supporting them, but we probably should put forth some sort of estimate on there, because that is what DEQ is going to take from to then give the county back the overall, maybe capacity's wrong, but the overall flow that they're going to go for. And if we wanted to like to get a portion of that, we kind of need to put forth what we would like that portion to be, and of course, as always, you have to shoot a little higher. The last that I heard was 800,000, which is a lot high. Like, I know that it would come in lower than that. You know, the language in here about not being, you know, fully committed, I can certainly understand and support that, but I personally would feel more comfortable having a number, because otherwise, we're basically just saying, go Caroline, we hope that you're going to get it, and we'll just be on the sidelines, rather than not necessarily be on the sidelines.
Well, I know in the original letter, what, eight, 800,000, was that it?
Yeah, that was the letter that Caroline drafted for us.
Yeah, that was the statement they came up with. I know when we had a discussion with them, Josh had said something, he thought it was really high, maybe we could come down on that, maybe do it down to 6,000.
Could we give Josh an opportunity? He has actually spoken with Ms. Moore at DEQ about this, so I don't know if he is ready to, if he's prepared to answer the question, but he has some information on how the numbers can be...
Oh, is he on here?
Yeah, he is.
Josh, can you hear us?
Yeah, they're acting up.
You have anything on that? About, about, uh, corner teeth?
So currently, I think they originally had projected that we were using 300,000 gallons a day right now, which, which we're not. We're only using around 150,000 gallons a day, and actually, that number is actually going down so far this year. And then with the water project ongoing with replacing main lines and then replacing the meters, which will help a lot of customers see if they have any leaks, which will obviously decrease usage. And then with the town only having so much room to like actually grow like the bill wise, I don't see the town using 800,000 gallons in the future, but I can work with the engineer and ask them to give us maybe a better projection if that'll work for y'all. And the other thing, just one thing about, if you don't join right now with the permit, there's always, you know, that chance that you can join later on, you know, so if you don't want to commit right now, there is also, you can join later on, you know, if, you know, town council and the town seats fit on that.
To clarify, I think on Josh's statement, DEQ would allow for Caroline's permit to be amended if the town chose to join on. We can't say what Caroline would allow, but DEQ, if the town joined on, would amend the permit.
Yeah, amend the permit, but also it would probably amend the price. I mean, you know, we could be looking at paying even more money down the road if we decide not to and decide to get DEQ to make Caroline put us on a permit in 20 years. Yes, Jeff? I think Jeff is here, Jim Sealy. Y'all don't mind, I can get him to speak a little bit on, because he is more versed than I am.
Could I catch this up before Jeff goes? Just so Jeff doesn't have to say it. You know, the county has been, we've had this since at least October, and I just want to say that I don't really like the idea of not sending them any kind of letter and then, you know, if it comes up later, we want it, doing it then, and then trying to force the county to put us on there. I'd like to have a better relationship with the county. I have a couple other things to say, but I'll go ahead. Go ahead.
Let me first say that this, this study started two years ago with actual water capacity and how much everybody was going to actually draw. So there was an engineering group that got together, and the town was part of it, the county, King George. So those numbers are well-based in an engineer's study. Second of all, we've already spent over $2 million on what we're calling the straw in the river, and we're going to have to do a water intake at the completion of this. That is the next step for us, which is probably going to be upwards of $1 million to do that. The other part of this is, we're all asking for an allocation from the river, and this isn't 10 or even 15 years from now, it's probably 20 or 25 years from now. We don't know with that allocation, how much they will cut it from the original number that we put in for. So whatever we put in for is justified by the engineering numbers that we've gathered over this period of time to do this application. What they allow us to withdraw will change over time. So though, we, currently, the town in the plan is in for 800,000, which you don't have to ask for, but if we take a 30 or 40 or 50% cut over time, over the next 15 or 20 years, just to the application's ability to withdraw, what everybody needs to be aware of is that's, we're shooting for the max number they're going to allow today, but that doesn't mean that that's going to be the amount we're going to be able to withdraw when we start. So we're looking down the road, and I mean, you've got the 301 corridor that has nothing on it. So to say, we don't know what, none of us know what the water capacity out there would be in 25 years. I'm just going with what our staff has said, the engineers have been to us to talk to us about, and what all the, what everybody's adding up to draw. Yeah, the permit could probably get amended later, but I think Mr. Gaines is correct, that's going to cost money from the county side, which is going to cost the town. It's a letter today, it's an ask for, it's an ask for an amount or an allocation of water. Nobody's tied to this, and I think this is going to go through many, many, many changes over the next, you know, couple decades of time that are going to go by before we actually get it. So what we were told and what we're planning for is what our engineers told us, we're looking at the mass capacity based on, we've looked at other localities and what their consumption was from where they, where they were, where we are today and where they are today, and how long it took them to get there, and what the capacity was that was needed, and we're aiming for that. So I'm just saying, it's easy today, it's a letter, it's an allocation, there's no dollars associated with it, and none of us know what this is going to cost. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. So what would y'all like to do with, the time, this is the final hour of this month. This is the final hour of this month, is it, is that right, Jeff?
Yeah, this is okay, he goes into the middle of March.
Right, so we've got to either get on it or not on it. And I hate to see us not on it. So we don't know what it's going to be like 20, 25 years, even with the water jobs, you know, with the water filters, you have no idea knowing that. But, uh, it's up to y'all. Y'all, uh, decide what you want to do, what you want to put in, and then we'll vote on it.
Well, I know that we, you know, as a town, we want to be as, as self-sufficient as we can. I don't think too many want to get completely away from the groundwater. I, I don't think that's necessarily the point for us in trying to do this. This is just meant as a, an extra utility if we may need it in the future and it could be very useful. It wouldn't mean basically, you know, buying water from county, so I see why we want to be self-sufficient, but, um, I heard 300K a minute ago, so why don't we just double that and say 600 and just go with that? Or split, you go 450.
That's water, not money.
Right, right. I'm not trying to spend anything anymore.
I want to make sure.
No money.
I mean, you know, we're at heat, you know, with the engineers and if they do do cuts and then that will drag and you take it down, busting for the six, next thing you know we're down to four. Right now, we're pushing at three.
I'm good asking for the K.
And we're doing half of that. I'm just saying, you know, you know, we're at three now and we're doing about 100 and a half.
Yeah.
So, and we haven't got any new building going on. But I'm just saying, it just, you know, we need to consider if we have to go to max and they cut it, then we're still looking good.
I was just tossing that there, I was ready to make a motion, but, you know, I would...
Well, somebody, uh, wanted to make a motion.
Well, I had, I mean, I guess my concern is, this was, I mean, I was thinking this is just like a letter, like an MOA in a way, or, you know, a, a letter commitment. I, I just, I guess, I wonder if putting a number in there losses into that. I mean, I, I understand you want to say we want our share, but at the same time, putting a number in there kind of, and, and it, and I, I agree, this is years down the road. I mean, I, I don't want, I just worry that I, I, I kind of want to make the right decision here, but I'm not sure I understand the significance of putting a number when this is mainly saying, yes, we're interested, we want to make sure that we're included in this. I mean, is it, I mean, because you guys know a lot more about it than I do, so I'm relying on your information to help me understand.
Of course, well, I've...
We do have a work session on March 10, which is next Wednesday with informational meeting with, um, Doug Meyer, Virginia Department of Health Office of Drinking Water.
If we, if, if we do that, then we'll have to call a special meeting after that to,
Well, at last meeting, um...
You know, about this or not, because we've got to get it to the county by the middle of the month.
At last meeting, and Andrea can correct me, but we just needed a consensus of council, we didn't need a vote. So if that still stands...
Well, you, yeah.
Correct.
You're right, we don't need a vote because we already voted on the letter.
Right.
To be written, we just need a consensus on what we need to have put in it. Uh, you know, the rep, the letter sounds pretty good, but we do need to put some type of commitment on there, uh, as far as how much water to allocate.
Because this project's like, it would be a safety net for us, right? Basically, it's a...
It, it could be a safety net or it could be a life support. You just, you just don't know. Uh, with, with DEQ, the, the state now handles the, uh, water aquifer. And what they're doing, the cutting, uh, you've got big, uh, paper plants down below us and they're pulling so much water out of the ground, you just don't know what it's going to be like because it's not filling back up. We've got a guy that's supposed to come out and tell us about it, but even him telling us, you know, I don't know, I'm just saying it could be one or the other. We don't know what it's going to be like in 25 years. And the allocation is to help with the permit so they know how much water to allocate to pull out, how big a pipe DEQ is going to make to put in, uh, you know, their, their draw, how big a reservoir they got to build, I mean, it, it all comes together.
I, I guess one of the confusions for me, a lot of confusion is I guess not knowing a cost or a dollar figure. It's, I, it's a long way down the road and, you know, you're pumping, you're putting in pipeline, you're doing all of this, what portion of that and how much will the town be responsible for? For the water, if you ask for 600 now, I'm sure if you needed more, that's something that can be worked out, but it's, all ends up at the piggy bank. So I, that's the challenge I have, I just don't see a dollar there, but I, this has got to get done and you can't keep delaying, we really need to move forward. So that's my confusion there for me.
Right, um, to, to speak to what you were saying, it's more than a letter of support, like that's, that's the first thing, it's a letter of support, we're supporting the county in what they're doing, but at the same time, it's also going to be a letter of interest because we, we support the county in what they're doing and we are also interested in the project and therefore, please increase what you're going to give the county because we might want some of that as well. Ultimately, the county's going to pump out whatever comes out, it's going to be the county's equipment and, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, once this is all completely done, decades from now, we would be purchasing water from the county at that time, right?
I don't know because I haven't seen any kind of plan that says, I mean, yes, it's the county's permit, it's the county's water, so...
Yeah, that's, that's all, I mean, we need the county's water.
But more than that, we'll also be responsible for a pro round of share of the project. So at, at last look, I believe I calculated 800,000 gallons was going to be 13% of the project, but we don't have anything formal in writing, so I don't know, you know, how that would work.
Yeah.
Well, none of the counties do, right?
No, yeah, as far as, there's nothing as far as I've seen that's in writing.
I'm on, we're going with, with the county, they've spent thousands, thousands of dollars on the engineering already.
Are you, you're going to, you're going to make a motion or what?
Make a motion that we go forward with the 800,000.
I got a motion, like 10 games, go forward with 800,000, I have a second on that.
800,000, we're talking about the water.
Rock water, got you, thank you. 800,000 gallons of water and that money. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
You have a second, boss? Uh, do a roll call for this one. Gene?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Jerry?
Arthur?
Yes.
All right, we'll send a letter, uh, amendment to Andrea, adding the, uh, 800, Valerie, please, dress it up a little bit.
Water.
800, gallons of water, I'm sorry, Valerie wants to make sure I say that. All right, and we got to get it to, uh, the county by the middle of the month, right, Jeff? All right, moving on, let's see, you still got some more stuff.
I have a couple other items. Um, the next one is we received a request via email from Barbara Prossen, who has decorated the Christmas tree each year on Main Street. She's asking for, uh, 290. I think it's 290. It's a, it's a total of $290, 65, uh, for ribbon and 225 for leaves, gold leaves. So she's asking for a donation of $290 for updated Christmas tree decorations. So I could get some consensus, I mean, we have, obviously 290, we have the money in the budget, but it is an ask for a donation, so I, Andrea, do we need a vote?
Yes.
All right, do I have anybody want to make a motion on how we want to do this?
I'll make a motion that we fund it, 290.
I got a motion, a 10 games, fund 290 dollars of water, do I have a second?
A second, yes.
You have a second by Deborah. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
How come, I just want to know why so soon? I mean, you just got over with Christmas or not even at the Easter party?
It takes her a while, they, they order stuff way ahead of time, uh, because if they don't, then the suppliers run out. She, she deals in, you know, commercial suppliers and she's been doing it and that's why.
It is more affordable right now.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
Nay, okay, we got, uh, six ayes and one nay. Motion passes, vote for the 290. Moving on, here, uh, town manager.
Okay, a motion to schedule informational work session for the water system, uh, with, that's the one I had mentioned with Doug Meyer, Department of Health Office of Drinking Water, and he's going to give us, um, some information on our water system, our aquifers. There, there is some misinformation going around and I just would like, he is an engineer, I'd like him to come and give us information, so. 6:30, I, it's, uh, on your, in your package, I put 6, it's actually 6:30, uh, on next Wednesday. And the planning commission has already voted to attend as well, so they can have the information for planning, uh, you know, future development.
You say it's at 6:30?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's up to everybody on to, uh, try to attend for this because I tell you what, you learn a lot. I've, I've been through it a few, a few years ago, uh, and I made sure that you see how much has changed since then. Uh, you can really learn exactly where your water comes from, it doesn't come from a rain. That rain does not hit it, trust me. So, you know, when it's four to two inches out here, we don't see it down there, so. But yeah, uh, but yeah, that's good. Uh, so do I have a motion to schedule a work session with, uh, on 3:10 and 6:30 PM? Yes.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I got a, I got a first by Jeff, second.
Second.
Second by Tammy, all in favor, say aye.
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 Ladies? Clive, Heather.
And if I could just ask, um, for everyone to please submit questions to me, any question, doesn't matter how ridiculous you might think it is, if you'll just submit to me individually, I'll put the list together to give Doug Myers a little bit of a heads up, um, so he can be prepared. And also, we're encouraging the public to submit questions to me in advance, so I'll have to do it in advance, but that way their questions can be answered as well. The last item is schedule informational session with the town attorney about land use and planning. Initially, we were trying to do it before the planning commission's public hearing on the comp plans, chapters nine and 10, but that scheduling didn't seem to work. So I'm asking if March, so on your package, you're seeing the ninth or the 11th, which is Tuesday or Thursday of next week, but that, we realized, uh, the ninth was the county's meeting and the 11th, I can't recall, something was happening, I probably don't remember what, so...
I think it was too soon, we had one on the 10th and then they asked to come back on the 11th, so that's why we decided, maybe one more week.
So the 18th, which is the two Thursdays from now, if everyone's available, at 7:00 PM. And we would encourage it to be by Zoom. Um, it's really just going to be the town attorney giving us information, of course, questions are always welcome, but it'll give everyone the opportunity, um, to do it from home and I will set up here at town hall for anyone that would like to participate here by Zoom.
So we still don't care if they can come here. Go ahead, Andrea.
The rationale behind the Zoom is that it's actually easier to conduct the meeting and for everyone to hear if everyone is on Zoom.
Okay.
And you don't have to wear a mask.
Oh, thank you. Where yours at? You're, you're not more than six feet away from Gene. All right, so, uh, y'all want to schedule this? We don't have to vote on it enough, right?
Yes, sir, I, yes, you do.
We do? Okay, all right. Uh, I have a motion to, uh, accept the schedule information, to schedule an information session with the town attorney about land use and development planning on 3:18 at 7:00.
So moved, Mr.
I got a first by Jeff, second. By Valerie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ladies? Clive, Heather, lots of passes.
All right, I want y'all to contain enthusiasm.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And unless there are any questions for me, uh, that is all I have.
Good job. All right, next on the agenda is consent agendas. We have seven through 11. Do, uh, I have a motion to accept the consent agendas as they are?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to discuss nine a little bit.
I would like to discuss, uh, seven and eight also, please.
Okay.
So that means that seven, eight and nine have been pulled off the consent agenda, the remaining consent agenda are items 10 and 11, so you can go ahead and vote on that.
I would move that we, uh, accept, um, the public hearing is for our next regular scheduled meeting, correct?
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, and I would move that we pass, uh, number 10 and 11 as presented.
Do I have a second on that?
You said 10 and 11?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second, 10 and 11?
A second, yes.
I have a second by Tammy Gaines. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? All right, 10 and 11 passes. All right, let's, uh, let's do number nine first, this is a single.
Cool. It would be easier for our purposes for the minutes if we could go in order.
In numerical?
And do, yeah, thank you.
Is there any change in seven and eight or is it just a certain one or the both of us? Who has that?
There was, I had a question on seven, eight, I think I was...
Seven and eight, all right, let's do, uh, we're going to pull them all out individually then, if that's okay, you ready, Andrea?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, uh, let's start with number seven.
So, thank you. I just have a couple of questions on some, um, things. I know last year we discussed with David Brooks calling, because we give him a lot of money each month, were we going to share the wealth? Someone had mentioned that at another town council meeting last year, we want to maneuver things around, is that a possibility or is David the only one that we...
We, we do work with another contractor who has told us recently he's been unavailable. So we use two local people currently. The other one has been unavailable, he's just loaded with work and when we have called, he said he wasn't available, he said he wouldn't be available till May. Later on in the agenda, we do have that emergency utility repair with the county, so they, that would be... And I did, um, receive itemized price lists from each contractor that we work with so that we know there's not one contractor that's just, you know, that's overly high.
Gotcha. The freelance store, $1149, obviously we set up a lot of public hearings, so in the town code section 3-183, it allows the planning commission and town council to hold a combined public hearing, is that a possibility on some days? Because that's a lot of money you're putting out for all of these hearings if we can combine them?
Yeah, we've definitely done joint public hearings before, so if that is, um, how planning commission and town council like to proceed, we can, it'll just require either the planning commission or town council to hold a special meeting. So that is something we can definitely...
Got it, okay.
I think we did it once, like, three years ago and I haven't seen it done in county before.
I will note, one of those that looks extremely high, I believe, was the utility relief, um, public hearing or public notice ad, the one where we, uh, a memorandum where we decided to apply to be exempt from the cutoffs, the water cutoffs. It was a rather wordy ad, we were just required to put certain verbiage in there, so that did bring up that this month. We were just required to put certain verbiage in there, so that did bring up that this month's freelance store deal.
Um, for stemble plumbing, we put out almost four thousand dollars. Are we have a plumbing problem, or is there repairs in, uh, something you're taking, or?
They, um, generally, there's two things, I believe, that we use stemble for most often, and it's jetting lines and cameraing lines. And I believe that they were, Josh may need to speak on this, but I believe they were on Maury Avenue to camera the line when we weren't sure if a lower was connected on Maury. But we all have discussed actually purchasing our own jet trailer because of how much we spend jetting lines. So that is something that I was kind of waiting for our budget to, at the end of the year, to see if we had money, and I was gonna come to counsel with that.
Um, and the only thing I, uh, the two, two little things, um, friends from Big Band, Wine Festival, five hundred, is that a refund?
Those were reissued checks, they never cleared, so we had to cancel the old ones and reissue.
You got it, okay. And then the just refunds for, um, town hall activities, a hundred and fifty dollars? Is that for like yoga or something?
Yeah, that's the yoga instructors. No, I'm sorry, I'm being told that's not what that is. Oh. I'm sorry, I, I stand corrected. It was someone who could not hold their town hall event because of the COVID restrictions, so we gave them their deposit back.
Got it, all right, thank you very much, thank you.
Anybody else?
Anybody else? Yes, sir, mine kind of goes with, um, bills, but it also ties in with the minutes. So I guess I put it together under one.
Okay.
There, there's some larger amounts on here and I just, um, would maybe like to bring it up to council to see if we set a threshold, uh, moving forward, that if something's over a certain amount, that it goes out for a bid process. Um, it just, um, I, I think it would help us out.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I think with us being as small as we are, uh, we're not required to do that also. Uh, but Melissa could probably speak on that, on some of the stuff.
I, I understand that, but.
Yeah.
We're talking about spending taxpayer, citizens' money, and so, um, I, I think setting that threshold would either mimic what the county does, you know, obviously on a lower scale. But, um, you know, we could provide clarification to citizens if they had a question on that. Because there's, if you look through here, there's some that are well over fifty thousand dollars that, um, I, I think would probably be a good practice to look at.
I, I think Andrea has some input on that as well.
I, I think that if that is something the council is interested in, I think that there needs to be, um, a study done on that, because there will be, um, advertising costs and basis for the procurement law, which the town is not required to follow the state procurement law because of the size. The basis is to ensure that businesses have an opportunity to obtain, um, government business. It is not designed, um, to provide the best price for the locality. So I think that, um, I think before a decision like that is made, I, I think that it would benefit from some study. Maybe a study committee.
How would we do that, Andrea?
I mean, just that the council could appoint, you know, two or three people to get together and report back in thirty days, forty-five days, sixty days, um, on the cost benefit analysis of adhering to state procurement law.
And who here has got an olive medal on that? All right, uh, anything else there, Arthur?
No, sir, I'm good.
All right, well, we did, uh, y'all did call out seven and eight, we talked about seven and eight, uh, so, uh.
Can we get a, if, if there are no more questions on seven, can we get a vote on seven and move to questions on eight?
Well, he already did his eight.
Well.
Okay.
That's, uh, the last, it's from January, so would February technically need to be in here for the meeting minutes to approve? Or we?
So in Fe, at the February meeting, you actually approved the January bills. What you're seeing in the minutes is not approving the bills, it's just a list of bills that you did approve at the February meeting.
Understood, okay. So this will stay the way it is moving throughout council, your motion?
Okay, um, do I have a motion to accept seven, eight consent agendas as they are?
So.
I got a first by Jeff, second. Second by Deborah. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, everybody accepts, all right, we have another number nine. Planning commission member reappointments.
Okay, this, this was just, just me pulling this, just because I had some, uh, minor confliction with it, uh, quick history thing. Mark, you were the only one that was on council when I was initially appointed to the planning commission, I believe, right? Yeah, Jean, Jean, yes, sir. So you two.
I wasn't on, uh. Hmm? I wasn't on the planning commission.
No, no, you were, you were on council.
On council, yeah.
You two voted to appoint me to, uh, the planning commission.
Right.
Uh, at that time, um, there, there was one limit to stand, that was Matt, back when we had, uh, had Matt Rowe here. And his reason for abstaining was, um, that I did not go through the interview process. Part of that was because the planning commission didn't even have a quorum at the time, so I, it was kind of important to get someone on there. But, uh, when, when he, when he said that, he did that, I, it really, it stuck with me a lot. And ever since then, um, everyone has gone through the interview process for planning commission. Uh, and I appreciate that. So, uh, I'm just a little bit bothered, um, I, I don't want to do anything that's gonna harm any votes, but, um, for those of us that are up here, um, myself, Jerry Arthur, we were not in the interview process for, uh, these two folks. And I, I don't remember exactly, but I don't think all of the four of you that are here now were even at that meeting. Yes, I did, I remember Deborah was.
Do, do you work, were you?
I, I don't think Mark was there. Yeah, no, I remember you and we were talking, but. Okay, well, you're not, oh, there you go. Um, I, I couldn't remember, you know, I wasn't in, in the thing. Now, I know that that doesn't have any legal repercussions or anything. Um, I just, um, because I kind of stand by the point that, you know, it was told me a long time ago, um, I kind of just kind of felt iffy because I didn't get to interview these people. I, I, you know, I never got to ask any particular questions. I don't want to get in the way, so I, I, I also feel conflicted to abstain from the vote as well. But I, I just wanted to air that out there and see if anybody else had anything to say along those lines.
Technically, Arthur and Lisa were never interviewed either. Council never interviewed Arthur and we never interviewed Lisa. We never interviewed you.
Right.
So the last person ever to be interviewed for planning commission was myself. So if it's the town council that is responsible for doing that, you weren't on town council at the time, I guess, I'm having just a hard time understanding why you're conflicted, so I may do.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just saying that, like, I would, like, I'm on council now. And so if I got a letter of somebody wanting me on planning commission, I would make it my mission to make sure they're interviewed. Um, these are people that are being reappointed now, and I'm just saying that I'm a little conflicted because I don't get that opportunity. And so I'm gonna vote on something that I was not in the air of the process for.
I get you, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, that's my fault, yes.
So is it a request then that the council conduct an interview?
We, we didn't hear you, sorry.
One, is it your request that council schedule an interview so that the current sitting council can interview the prospective, the, you know, the?
I, I feel like that's asking an awful lot. It's, it's just me and I, I don't want to get in the way, I just, it was important to me and I just wanted to mention it.
Well, wow.
Um, you know, and, you know, have, have everybody else vote first and they, I, I want to support what the, the council decides.
Well, you know, well, these people are already on there, it's just up to reappointment, so I don't see why they want to go back and interview them now. If you, if you don't want them on there, you can just, it's like you say, no, and then we can put it out and interview somebody else for it. Uh, but since they're up for reappointment, I think that's a little, uh, unnecessary at this time.
I, I agree.
You know, when we have openings coming up, then, yeah, we can, you know, move forward and make sure that we do do the interviews like we should do, you know? But I think right now it's a little pointless, but something we can do.
Yeah, you all did great, you had the interviews in December, and that's good. And that's, I just want to keep that going.
All right. Anything else? Does it not, we'll vote on number nine? We, we can do a road call on it, if you like.
That's fine.
Uh, do I have a motion to, uh, say the number nine, uh, planning commission reappointments of, uh, Scott Signan and Sandra Pelter?
Could you please put their terms in?
Oh, I'm sorry, their terms. One of them is ending March twenty twenty-one, and the other is March sixteenth twenty-one, and it will carry them out to March first twenty twenty-five for Scott Signan and March sixteenth twenty twenty-five for Sandra Pelter. Do I have a motion?
A motion for Scott and a motion for Sandra.
Right, both together, yes.
Are you doing it together?
That's what's, that's what it's written on here.
I make a motion that we reappoint Scott Signan and Sandra Pelter to the planning commission with the terms ending March first twenty twenty-five and March sixteenth twenty twenty-five.
I got a motion for Arthur, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, any discussions?
Um, I don't have a challenge with Scott, and I do have a challenge with Sandra, so I don't know how it works.
Uh, this you can sustain, right? If you had it, yes, you had to sustain it.
Well, you don't have to.
Well, I have a right, but if you feel, if you do, then you can just, you know, sustain it, okay? All right, uh, road call, uh, Arthur?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Deborah?
Aye.
Uh, Valerie?
I would say.
Uh, Tammy?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Uh, Jean?
I abstained.
All right, so we have five misses and two extinctions. Uh, your reason for, uh, sustaining, Jean?
So, you want me to tell you why I, why I don't want these people, is that, is that what you're asking for?
Oh, I see, yes, sir, no, I'm, I'm just asking why you sustain them, because you, you're supposed to have a reason.
You abstained, I said you abstained, though.
Yeah, I abstained, I said no.
All right. All right, moving on.
We had another extension, so I, uh, if Councilwoman Coyle could just say her reason for abstaining?
Say it again, sorry.
I, I just, we need Councilwoman Coyle's reason for abstaining?
Can she hear that?
Because I'm abstaining because of a negative on Sandra Pelter, but I am positive on Scott Signan. So that's why I asked if it's easy just to break them out, but if they're together on there, that's fine, I get that.
All right, moving on to unfinished business. Carolina County Emergency Unit, U. K. B. Key Repair Mutual Aid Agreement. This is, uh, this has been around for a while, and I think it was voted on by council four or so years ago. I think right before I came on, but it never went anywhere. Nobody ever signed it on either side, county or here, this and that. So, of course, we've come back with it, and we've asked some questions on it, we've had a few things devised on it. Uh, if you look at it, what's written in red are answers to the questions, uh, that we have concerns about, and I think it really answers them really good. I think it's, uh, turns, makes it out to be a really good, uh, mutual aid agreement with the county. Uh, essentially, it's just to give us a resource to having our utilities repaired in the groundwater and sewer, uh, mainly water. They, they don't have some of the equipment needed to go deep, even some of our water lines are deep. Uh, so, you know, what we would do is we would call the county up first. If the county's able to do it, they will come out. If not, we move to one of our contractors. And we're not even locked into calling them first, okay, you know, I don't want to make that sound like we have to call them first, okay? Uh, you know, this still allows us to go out and use our regular contractors that we use as well. But it is a means of saving money for the taxpayers by using what the county is offering. They, they got a list in here of what the costs are, you know, what y'all want to see. So as far as I'm concerned, I mean, it's, I think it's a really good agreement to get into with the county. They're not trying to take over anything else, it's just for utility, emergency repairs. So with that, do we have a motion? Do we accept this?
This would save on, like, Brooks, Brooks bills and stuff like that.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we accept this as presented.
A second.
All right, I got a first by Jeff, second by Tammy. Now open for discussion, any, any questions?
Um, I just have a quick question. Melissa, there were stipulations that the town council made previously and that were put in here, but never disseminated, so those are in here, all right?
I'm not sure which, which you're, I'm not sure what you're referring to. Do you mean, like, four years ago?
Exactly, so four years ago, the town council said, we have these stipulations. They brought them back to the county, the county agreed with that, but nothing ever transpired.
This was the absolute last time I could find that both was presented to the county and to the town.
Okay, I just wanted, because I couldn't remember what one of them was, and I just want to make sure they were.
Anybody else? Here is, uh, your road call, uh, Arthur?
Aye.
Uh, Jerry?
Aye.
Deborah?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Tammy?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Clive has it, motion carries. Any nays? All right, so I'm late on that. All right, moving on. New business, update job description. This is a, uh, let me show you the record. Okay, yes. Twenty nineteen council, council adapted the job description by the National Development Committee. The listed job functions are narrow in scope. The attached process of job descriptions allows for greater flexibility, which better reflects the administrative needs of the town. The goal in adapting updated job description in reorganizing duties is to allow for fewer administrative staff to cover all the scope of work, ultimately eliminating an administrative position and saving the town money. The director of community planning and economic job description will be placing events and event and economic development coordinator job description. I don't know, some of you have some questions on this.
Melissa, is there a change in that pay range?
This is the same pay range that's on the current event, uh, economic development coordinator's job description.
On the economic development?
Yeah, the current job description that's in place, that this would be replacing, it's the same pay scale.
So basically, they were combining event coordinator and ADA coordinator?
Well, those were really already combined. This is actually adding, um, other job duties that have been expected of that person, of that position, but not ever formally incorporated into the job description.
What's the pay range for the event coordinator?
It's the exact same. It's forty-seven, not, nine seventy-nine, seventy-six, seven sixty-six.
Is there a reason for that number of sixty-two thousand in there?
That was how it was adopted. It's kind of like a mid-range so that you get a...
So we don't have to do the math for that?
Okay. So I have a question. I, I would think that we're doing these job descriptions to create for people that work in town a career path. It's not many, but it gives people an opportunity to advance themselves. So this is now Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, community planning, i.e. land use, planning commission type things. It's community planning. It's not go next to rent to your neighbor. So if I am the clerk treasurer and I say, I want to advance myself and really think I like to do economic development and planning because that seems interesting, but for me to do that, I need to take a pay, a pay cut. I don't get that pay ranging to the ban that's been created. If you want to advance someone in a job, why would you want to take a pay cut? So for me, these pay bans don't divvy up. There's no overlapping and when you don't have an overlapping, it costs the town more money. So if that were the case for a clerk treasurer to become the new community planning person, the increase alone is going to be just the minimum, almost eighteen thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. If it overlapped, it may only be three or four thousand. So I have an issue with that. My only other question is, why aren't we doing all the other job descriptions that were supposed to be done in the work session?
Completely agree.
We're just doing this. The work session was canceled twice, once on the twentieth of January, once on February ten. I'm not even sure of why everything was canceled, but I'm just trying to figure out why we're doing this piecemeal when we were supposed to do this all in one shot. I understood and I got some feedback that maybe it was too big of a scope all at once. I think the package that I put together was too much all at once, so I decided to break it down into pieces, but certainly I'm open to direction. When I did the last two work sessions, planned the last two work sessions, I had a comprehensive package of all updated job descriptions, all updated salaries for those job descriptions and a financial plan that showed the benefit of realigning. Yeah, I was just wondering, are we still on the path of keeping as is or restructuring? I know Andrea went through all of this work of doing an organizational chart, all of this, you know, it's time consuming for her and we're now three months, we're actually, we started this in November of last year. It is now March and we haven't gotten any further. So I'm just kind of wondering, why are we dragging our butts and can't we get this resolved so everybody can move forward in a peaceful, positive way so that people don't feel like they're getting bit?
I got a question, if that's fine. For me, there's two things, I guess. When I read this as a director, I think of that as an individual who oversees multiple employees with, I know with the staff size that we have, to me, that reads that we were going to expand that department of community planning and economic development later on down the road. So I guess my question is, is there a goal to hire another individual underneath of that, to have the term director? And then my second question is, is the literature from the previous documentation of, that was shown as Deputy Town Manager, it's, it's identical for the required knowledge and skills and abilities. So was there any literature change in there? And if, I mean, there are two different types of positions.
I did combine some of the duties from Deputy Town Manager and then the current event, Economic Development Coordinator, combined them together to get a different job description based on the feedback I received from council.
And that, and that feedback is coming back from me as well. I was the one that asked, that talked with Melissa and Andrea about slowing this thing down and let's regroup it. And that was the reason why we canceled, well, part of the reason why we canceled the last, why I canceled our last work session. First was we weren't thrilled with the weather was coming in and we called for ice and stuff. We didn't want to get people out into that. The other is, is that we needed to step back and regroup on the deputy director's job description, the, what they have responsibility for. You know, we already got a town manager that is, you know, that we just hired and she has all the responsibilities. So we need to regroup and kind of steer away from a deputy as far as having responsibilities running with the town when we have a town manager. Before that, we really didn't have one. So they were kind of looking at it. So that's the reason for that. So we can still group, you know, present this as we go along on how we want to regroup our girls down there to run the office. I don't think we need to hire anybody else if we're trying to save money.
Well, if you don't put the bands together, these pay ranges, ranges, I don't know how you're going to save any money. If you have Melissa who retires in ten years and then you're going to have somebody who says, I want to be the new town manager from within our ranks, which advancement is always a good thing, you're going to be paying that person from the pay ranges almost twenty thousand dollars more instead of having them overlap as you progress down the line. A deputy manager does that. That overlaps with the town manager's pay range, pay ranges. All the pay ranges should have some type of overlapping so that it's not going to cost the town extra money, you know, other than the two or three thousand dollars or whatever bands they get, unless it's a completely, totally new position. And if we're doing this in a, hopefully as a career path for our employees, that's what we should do. I mean, I mean, this is, you look at this and I look at that, I'm thinking, Jesus, that's, that's a big difference for someone who, and as for a director, I don't know, I, and I don't want to sound like a snob, but I was Director of Education Certification and I had absolutely nobody underneath me. I don't think the word director means you have to have subordinates. It's just, you're the director. It's executive director, director, some of them come with extra pay. I don't know. If I may offer clarification on the title director, I was trying to align it with our other departments where we have Director of Public Works and Utilities. And then when the last town manager was here, the title was Director of Administrative Services, serving as clerk treasurer. So it kind of gave it some fluidity and some consistency. So that was the, my reasoning in giving it that name. And I did hear some feedback about the word planning, community planning. I think an appropriate title could be Director of Community and Economic Development if planning didn't seem appropriate because this position would not become the zoning administrator. So if that felt like, like a disconnect, we could just remove the word planning.
That, that sounds better. We don't have a community development department, so, yeah, that's it.
Well, the person's going to be assisting the zoning administrator, doing planning commission and board work, supporting that. That's planning. Yeah, I'm fine with the word planning as well. I just have heard feedback. I'm willing to address it in, in either way.
I'm just, I guess, kind of like Valerie said before, I won't bring it up again, but I'm just kind of confused with how we approached the process and we stopped the process and now it's back on. I mean, I, we have to say, we have to find a solution for that, but...
We can just leave it the way it is.
Oh, we can't really leave it the way it is.
Well, and, and, well, that's why, you know, you know, things like this don't, just happen. Our government don't have them overnight.
Yeah.
You know, it don't. I mean, we've seen that from time to time again. You know, we, you know, we look at one thing and then all of a sudden something happens and we're like, you know, we really didn't like that. Let's, let's find something else. So, and, and the deal with the overlapping of the pay, I mean, that's why we have a pay scale. If this person is knowing that they want to eventually get to this job, they do better at the job they have and they get time and service and they get the money coming up, hence the pay scale. Then by the time they get up to this position, you don't have quite a big jump. But usually, you know, I know we've got a smaller department, but usually when you're in a bigger department, you go from one department to another, to another before you finally get up to the head. You know, we're a little different here. And yes, we are saving money because we're down one employee right now. That's seven some thousand plus dollars right there being saved.
I like to speak to that. Because that was originally one of our, our issues, you know, the, the decision to go from a staff of five to four. And that's where I think we have a disconnect. If we continue on a path doing one at a time, it would be very helpful to be able to, okay, this job description has these things, but we're going to have questions in our head. Okay, well, who does blank? And so if we have the other job description, oh, that person's going to do that. So we can draw all those lines. And that's why I expressed at the time, I've, you know, I was happy to hire the town manager, but like, it, you know, I wanted to have all of this done. And sure, we all want to have all of this done. So I, I prefer to, to do it all at once. It's, it's going to be more work to do that. I recognize that. I, I just feel that we're missing some information if we only have the, the one in front of us. Additionally, even to that, I, in this case, I guess it's harder because this is not exactly an existing job description, but it, we're missing the old job description here from the other pieces that you pulled to, to look at what the original was. Again, this is kind of new, so hard to really pull back. I do agree with the, the overlapping of, of the pay scale. Go ahead, sorry.
I, I have a suggestion. I, I get, you know, I've been listening and, what, I think the, what's hard is to look at this and to take Valerie's point and when you're looking at one job description, it's hard to say, what are the overlapping salaries? I'm going to be to look at what everybody else is making when you're looking at a big plan of, we only have one piece of this puzzle in front of us. I also think it's, you know, I know it's Melissa's job, but at the same time, we're kind of trying to, we're trying to ask her to do something, but yet we're not happy with what she's done. So what I kind of wonder is maybe, and we were not all in the planning meeting because we had the, we like public, we, the, you know, we were there, Jeff, I think Arthur was there when we saw, you know, Arthur, when we saw the original, I think, yeah. And I kind of wonder if we just need to, let's just have a work session and look at the original plan that Andrea did, go back to that?
I like it.
I would too. I mean, there may have been some issues with some things, but I think that's the starting point that we need to do. Instead of trying to reinvent the wheel, Andrea had, she did put a lot of time and effort into that and, and we could all, if we could all have a copy of that, go home and then, I don't care when y'all want to do it, but let's get together and let's, if you have concerns, write them down and let's discuss that and move forward with this. Because we're, we're spinning our wheels and I feel like that would be a great, great, that's my thought on how to get past this.
Yeah, I like that plan. I think that, like, getting more of us to, to pump our hands together to see what's missing from it, because it's a lot of information. And although I'm saying that I like it, I feel like if we're like, oh, my decision, I said, go with that, I probably have missed something. So I, I think if we, if we do work together, we could really get somewhere with that.
Because we talked about a lot of stuff and you guys that weren't there got it and did some pieces. And then we all of a sudden are on something different. We're asking Melissa to do something different. We're all, you know, we need to all be in on this because we all have a voice in this. We all have a concern and we're laying the roadmap for the future of, you know, the way we're, the infrastructure of, so I propose that we do it that way.
Like, like this thing, like, I like this, you know, minus what, what you're saying, Valerie, about the pay scale, but e- even the, the pay scale thing, that's another thing where you need to bounce it off the others. And so then that's what I think our, our biggest issue is with this. But otherwise, yeah, I do like it.
I have a question, if I may.
Yep.
Is this proposed Director of Community Planning, is that in lieu of the current position now as events coordinator? And also, second part, is that has anything to do with the proposed Deputy Town Manager? Just to be in lieu of that or that's still set?
No, right now it is, it's in lieu of it.
Part of our discussions was going from five to four, but initially they were talking, maybe having a deputy, but then we got away from that and reassigned some of the job duties, which were put into the, the job duties of the town manager.
In other words, the basic running of the town decisions were kind of taken out and given back to Melissa and then other duties were put in for the coordinator and Paul and Melissa.
I got a question from the last meeting and it wasn't too clear. So are we utilizing a older job description for the town manager or is there a newer job description for the town manager? I guess moving forward, we kind of got to clarify that one first. I was under the impression we did not have a current job description as to when we get that board. Okay. I, I mean, I'm just, are we using?
I think, I think we did have one for, when we hired the last one and did, did we write some of that?
Council adopted one in 2016.
Okay, well, I got it.
And that was part of the concern from the last meeting is that we're in the middle of doing job descriptions and we hadn't come to a conclusion, but we made a decision. So I think, like Debbie said, we need to circle back and, I mean, it's obviously, we've already made one decision that we, I guess, you know, that's made, my, my thing is, is when we go change the job descriptions, you know, we need to think about obviously the pay and maintaining the employees that we have on staff and what can we do by, yes, we are saving money, but we also need to, you know, look at the employees that we have, cost of living increases, things like that, and make sure, you know, the positions that we have are competitive and that the job descriptions are squared away before we, you know, keep on making decisions. That's my perspective on it.
All right. Well, then in that case, if I call for a motion to, to vote this down, would that be appropriate here, Andrea?
I don't think you need to do that.
Okay, we can just scratch it?
Yeah.
All right, because, because this is your, you know, discussion, you know, by motion. So just want to make sure, so we can just pass it off and move on?
Can we get a motion to set a work session so that we can resolve this?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
How, okay, I make a motion that we have a work session. What is our schedule? We usually do a PR meeting. When is that? Tuesday?
That is the third Tuesday, I believe, at seven p.m.
Does that suit everyone?
I have a conflict going on as we went. Earlier, I, I can't, but at seven, I have another obligation for another meeting.
Okay. We could set it for another night. I'm just concerned that I don't want it to, I don't want you to base any of it. And if it's like, yeah, yeah, okay. So what's, um, do you want to do it on a Thursday? What's the?
Twenty-fifth? Twenty-fifth in March? That's mine with me. How's that work for everybody?
I got the twenty-fifth on the table. Is that good for everybody? Seven o'clock, y'all will do, or six o'clock?
I can make it.
Twenty-fifth at seven?
Start earlier?
You, hey, y'all, y'all tell me what time. Six thirty, six o'clock? Six thirty? Six thirty good for everybody else?
Think we could do six thirty.
All right, so we'll have a work session on the twenty-fifth at six thirty. Is that right, Andrea?
So now we are, we're leaving on the tenth, the eighteenth?
Mm-hmm, eighteenth and the twenty-fifth. We're going to earn our money this month.
It means we need to get all of this done, too, so we don't have more months where we have to pack them like this.
Y'all need to get a motion on that, Andrea?
Yes.
All right, I thought so. I'm learning.
Can we combine any of those meetings? I mean, ask you guys. Is that possible?
I would say no. We have a...
I would prefer that we don't, I believe, probably Andrea would prefer that we didn't, because we have two people doing presentations, and I think it just confuses things and makes the meetings way too long.
I need somebody to make a motion on this.
I'll make a motion that we have a meeting on March twenty-fifth at six thirty P.M. to discuss the staff restructure.
The second. All right, second by Jeff. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries on the work session. All right, number fourteen. I think there's been, correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, a couple of concerns about council comments and committee comments.
Yes, the feedback I've received is that it's getting confused about when we have committee slash council comments, that they'd like to be separated, so we have a clear opportunity for council to make their comments separated from committee reports.
Right, and what I was thinking was, we could put council comments up at the beginning of the meeting. So if a councilman goes somewhere, does a class, or does something special, or, you know, anything that is different from committee comments, it gives council individual time to express, give gratitude to somebody, you know, something like that. Especially early in the day when you have people out here in the audience and people attended, they don't want to stay all the way to the end. So I was looking for a resolution to separate council comments and committee comments, keep committees at the end, and then have the head of the committee present what they did at their meetings, and have council comments at the beginning of the agenda.
So I believe the resolution has to be adopted, and then it would actually take effect the next meeting?
Okay.
Andrea, would you like to clarify?
Yes, that is correct, and so from a staff perspective, we just need to know what council would like to do so that we can prepare a resolution for next month's meeting.
So we would adopt, we'd present and adopt at next month's meeting, it would take effect in May?
And we would vote on it then, right? We just say, you know, it will be like...
We could vote on it, you could vote on it in April, and then it would become effective in May.
Okay.
Right.
So does this sound like something y'all would like to see amended on the agenda?
I don't have a problem with it, Mr. Mayor. Could I slogan one other option, just so that it's out there?
Yeah, feel free.
Yeah, okay. The council committee reports could be in the same section as the staff reports. Instead, you could keep the council comments at the end, or you could still move them at the beginning. I'm just laying out the other options. There are some, I know at, at, at Caroline County, they have comment at the beginning and the end. I think we need to come that all the way. And King George, they have more comment right after the public comment. I really am not sure either way how I feel about having it at the end versus the beginning. I'm curious how the rest of the council would feel.
The committee at the end?
No, no, the overall, because you were saying, when you say the beginning, do you mean immediately?
No, but, oh, after, after public comments, then the council can have a comment.
Okay, I'm, I'm amenable either way. I, I just would like to have them separated.
And then we have committee comments at the end. That's what I'm saying, the separation of that.
No, that's okay.
And then that way, it probably gives the council time to comment on public hearing.
Right.
So...
No, as long as it's after public comment, just, then that's helpful.
So how do y'all feel about this? Arthur?
It's fine with me. I agree with Jeff, as long as there's a time frame that we, I guess, resort back to the public comment section, like you said, on the table.
Jerry? Valerie and Deborah?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
All right, Kevin? Uh, Jean? All right, Andrea, you want to draw that resolution up for us then, and we'll vote on it next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
And for clarification, we're going to put council comments directly after public comments before staff reports?
Yes.
And are we going to leave committee reports after new business?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, last report of council committee comments. Head of the committees, who was that, Jeff? Go ahead, sir.
Okay, utilities, facilities, and all. I'll write down my notes here. Okay, so we talked about the level of support that we discussed tonight. We talked about the ways why the plant, the P E R, should be available in April, so we'll have some more engineering reports next month. We discussed some improvements, possibly some early discussion as far as some things going on in the playground over there. We're looking for some more staff research to really bring some best up. This focuses on like A D A compliance and maintenance, increasing the longevity of the structure. We discussed some communicated signage from the town office. Again, we're working on some numbers to come back before presenting. We discussed some of that Main Street parking, V D S stuff, the numbers marking the streets out there, and the meeting next week on Midtown. Cost of reminders all the time about that, maybe we should all try to be there. And then just some other public works equipment that we're looking for some costs of, and that's about it.
One question on the line payments on Dorfert. Is V D O G going to pick that cost up, or do we have to?
Do you want to clarify that, Melissa?
Oh, when I spoke with Kylie, she said V D O G would be covering that cost.
Oh, great.
Yes, and you know when that's going to be?
They've already gone out and done like the plan, as you guys have seen, so I think it's going to be happening this spring.
Okay, good. Glad you're picking the cost up. Thank you.
Are those stripes going to go on near the businesses on Dorfert as well?
No, it's only for Main Street. Only Main Street. Because that was the request that we gave.
I don't think, think it's on that Dorfert. We just, yeah, we had just mentioned Main because of the parking problem that we have. People taking up two spots. And who's, excuse me if I can't remember, head of the personnel, Deborah?
Yes. We did not need.
Okay. All right, with all that being said, do I hear a motion to a jury?
Make a motion to a jury.
I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have nades. You can stay here if you want.
Thank you, all.